Kind of quiet. Too quiet.
Anticipation.
Yeah.
It's an upside down running man.
It is one o'clock on Tuesday, December 21st. Regularly scheduled city commission meetings. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
And it is Commissioner Enrew's turn to do the pledge of allegiance as well as the invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to begin the prayer just by reading Isaiah 9:6-7, and then we'll pray. For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder; and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace. Of the increase of his government and peace there shall be no end, upon the throne of David and upon his kingdom to order it and to establish it with judgment and all with justice from henceforth, even forever; the zeal of the Lord of hosts will perform this. Let us pray. Father, we are so grateful for this time of the year when we think of the many gifts that we have been given, not only as people, Father, but also as a community. And, Father, today we just ask that you help others to share those gifts. We lift up those who are less fortunate during this time of the year, Father, or those who are in need. And, Father, we pray a special prayer for those who are in the hospital, Father, who have any type of medical issue. We lift up our first responders, Father, and we are so grateful that they are always on the job and always ready to meet the need. And, Father, we are so grateful that although Jesus came as a baby in a manger, he has paid the ultimate price for the world, Father, and for our sins. And today, Father, we celebrate his life. Now, this is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I didn't see any changes needed from the meeting. Anybody else? They'll stand as approved as presented. Item five is public comment. This is a time that we set aside for anyone that would like to come up and speak to the commission on any item that is not on the agenda. We give you five minutes. Please come forward and state your name. All right, item six.
Item 6A, the City of Garden City and the Garden City Fire Department would like to recognize Eric Garcia as a recipient of the GCFD Fire Life Safety Award for alerting his mother to an active fire at his home.
Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. How are you guys?
Good. How are you?
On November 29th, 2021, the Garden City Fire Department was dispatched to report destruction fire in a multi-story apartment complex. Three-year-old Liam Garcia was watching TV and notified his mom of the fire on the balcony. Upon the arrival of GCFD, the complex had already been evacuated, as well as the rest of the building. So crews found no evidence of fire condition that extended to the inside of the structure. It pretty much stayed onto the balcony and was suppressed by the automatic sprinkler system. With his awareness and quick response, it helped with the not displacing of any families and was able to safely evacuate and get the fire under control at the time. So the Fire Department would like to present him with the Life Saving Award, which we had made a form and we'll grab a picture with you guys if you don't mind.
Sure, awesome.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Garden City Public Schools and St. Catherine Hospital to allow the mayor to proclaim the week of January 24th through January 27th, 2022, as Health Awareness Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I don't think anybody's here. Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And I'll read that on the 24th at Florence Wilson. So sign it right quick.
Item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim December 30th, 2021, as Jennifer Cunningham Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we proclaim, that we allow the mayor to proclaim December 30th, 2021, as Jennifer Cunningham Day in Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item approved. While she's here, we'll just read this right quick. It's... Yes? Everything okay?
I think there's some guests that they're...
I think they were trying to round up some special guests so they could hear and get their picture.
Oh, okay. Maybe?
Yeah.
Yep.
Art.
The proclamation reads, whereas Jennifer Cunningham began working for the City of Garden City as the city prosecutor in August 2012 and also took on municipal court administrator responsibilities in April of 2013; and whereas Jennifer Cunningham added interim information technologies director to her title and responsibilities in November of 2014, while continuing her role as the municipal court administrator and prosecutor. And whereas Jennifer Cunningham was named Assistant City Manager in October 2015 and promoted to Deputy City Manager in 2021. And whereas Jennifer Cunningham was a transformational leader in her nine years on city staff; and whereas Jennifer Cunningham was recognized by her peers in the city management profession as evidenced by serving on the Kansas Association of City County and Management Association Board and by having received the Assistant Excellence in Leadership Award in memory of Beaufort M. Watson Jr. And whereas Jennifer Cunningham will leave employment with the City of Garden City on December 31st, 2021, but remain an integral part of municipal government in her capacity as a city attorney; and whereas Jennifer Cunningham is regarded as one of the brightest, most influential, most dedicated, and most recognizable public servants in Garden City's history. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim December 30th, 2021, as Jennifer Cunningham Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for her service to this community; and highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities and duties for the City of Garden City. Signed and sealed the 21st day of December, 2021, Roy Cessna, Mayor.
Those were the days.
I'm gonna wait till you come. Dad, please come on.
She needs, they need someone really good looking in the pictures.
So gee, yeah. Thanks, Commissioner.
I remember those days.
They all come back.
They're a long time ago, but yes.
Next item.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim December 21st, 2021, as Randy Grisell Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to allow the mayor to proclaim December 2021 as Randy Grisell Day in Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. And the proclamation reads, whereas Randall Grisell began practicing law in Garden City in 1980; and whereas Mr. Grisell became city attorney for the City of Garden City in 1988, making municipal law the primary focus of his practice; and whereas Randy was a trusted advisor to the city commission and city staff through his responsiveness, sound counsel, and skillful representation; and whereas Randy also provided professional legal services to Garden City Community College, USD 457, and several other Southwest Kansas school districts and cities; and whereas Randy's talents were recognized by his peers as evidenced by having served on the Board of City Attorneys Association of Kansas, including one term as president of the Kansas School Attorney Association and the Kansas Board of Disciplined for Attorneys, including many disciplinary hearing office assignments; and whereas Randy will conclude his 33-year tenure as city attorney at the end of 2021; and whereas Randall Grisell will long be remembered as one of the brightest, most influential, most dedicated, and most recognizable public servants in Garden City's history. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim December 21st, 2021, as Randall, Randy Grisell Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to this community; and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities and duties for the City of Garden City. Signed and sealed the 21st day of December, 2021, Roy Cessna, Mayor.
Okay, on three. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right, thank you. That's actually yours.
So now his day begins? Is that...
Yeah.
Since it is my day, I think I'll take the rest of it off.
Should be noted that it didn't slip by Randy that this was not only a half day since it was awarded at 1:15 PM, but it was also the shortest day of the year. He's kind of feeling a little bit. We'll try to make up for that later.
Thank you.
And we do have a 1:15, and it's close to that time on the clock, so...
Western Kansas Corridor. I need to dial the number for this one too.
Okay.
If you have it, it'll go faster. Thank you.
Hi, this is Joe.
Joe Oaks, hi, this is Matt Allen, City Manager with the City of Garden City. I'm calling you from the City Commission chambers. We are getting ready to start a public hearing on the Western Kansas Corridor LLC item, and so you are mic'd and live. Thanks for joining us.
Terrific, thank you, Matt.
Yep, we'll get on with the proceedings here. Mayor?
And I'll open the public hearing at this time.
This is a 1:15, a public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing comments on the establishment of a tax increment financing district in Finney County as proposed by Western Kansas Corridor LLC. The mayor's opened the public hearing. We'll take public comment, including a presentation, I believe. Also, Mr. Joe Oaks, representing Western Kansas Corridor LLC, is on the phone. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the commission will have an opportunity to take up the ordinance, and if it passes, it would be ordinance number...
2920-2021.
All right. Thank you. Lana?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The governing bodies of both Finney County and the City of Garden City adopted resolutions setting the public hearing for this at their November 15th and 16th meetings. We did present at the public hearing yesterday with the county commissioners. They did authorize allowing the City of Garden City to establish the TIP district. Counties in Kansas don't have the statutory authority to create TIP districts. However, the law does allow cities to designate TIP districts outside their incorporated areas, which is what we've asked you to do in this instance. So you do have that ordinance in front of you. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. If you have any questions about the TIP tool itself, we're also happy to answer those.
Any questions from the commission? Is there any questions from the public? Okay. I will close.
Mr. Oaks, do you have anything that you want to volunteer in addition to what Lana Devall with Finney County Economic Development Corporation has presented to the commission?
Yes, sir. We're very excited about this project and the potential impact that it will have on bringing quality development and new jobs to the county and the Garden City metropolitan area. Otherwise, I'll be brief and, you know, open myself to any questions you may have that Lana can answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
No other questions from the public or commission? I will close the public hearing at this time. Entertain a motion on ordinance 2920-2021.
I move to approve ordinance number 2920-2021.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item?
I do want to tell Mr. Oaks, I appreciate being described as the metropolitan of Garden City, so that's really increasing that. So that's an awesome vision for our city. Thank you.
Any other discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks.
Thank you.
So back to item 6E.
Item 6E, along with the city commission, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Mayor Cessna, who has reached a 10-year service milestone. It was a little bit lost on us when we did our years of service milestone that, yeah, that commissioners are on that list too. So, Mayor, forgive us for, we can make something up and say we wanted to draw special...
That's quite all right.
Certainly haven't forgot it. So if the commission would like to join us up at the front and take a picture, we'd like to celebrate your 10 years of service as a city commissioner.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, he's pretty tall.
All right, on three. One, two, three. Looks good.
All right. Thank you very much.
We should have nominated him for a safety award. I didn't even think about it.
We're just collecting.
For 10 years.
Yeah, there you go. All right.
We're ready for the report of the city manager. We were pleased to receive an additional distribution from the Finney Foundation as they apply that towards the $230,000 they committed to the Garden Rapids at the Big Pool splash pad. And so they had given us $100,000 initially, and this additional $148,000 will go a long ways towards completing that pledge. So we've appreciated their partnership and this great addition to the park. Item 7B, we have attached the results from the auction. I don't know that this is a presentation item. I don't think it is. I'll look for a nod. No?
No, okay.
The nod, I didn't actually need the nod. The big eyes were... We have a notice from Cox Communications that is consistent with what they're required to do per the franchise agreement. Then items D through H are all staff reports. If you have any questions on those, we can try to answer them.
Just nice numbers on the regional airport, the enplanements. That's looking really good. Hopefully maybe set a record there if they keep up at the pace they are, so...
Yeah, I did have a meeting with a person who said that, he goes, "Well, you know, you guys have the only commercial airport." And I said, "Of course, we know that." And he was really looking forward to the, he flies in the United Airlines about four times a year, and he's really looking forward to the new airport terminal, so it's gonna be exciting.
You'll see the meetings of note. Then I believe there's one that we'll add, we have time to add to the next meeting, but I'll just call attention to it. It came through yesterday this morning.
Southwest Kansas Builders Association.
Yeah, Southwest Kansas Builders Association featuring Lana Devall, I think, as one of the two speakers. That's why she remembered, right? It's a breakfast. I believe it's January 8th, 10th?
We'll get an invite and we can let Selin know if we'll be attending.
We'll have it on the agenda, and it's a, I think it's open to all who want to attend. I think we're ready for item 9A. That's the appropriation ordinance. If you approve it, it would be ordinance number 2545-2021A.
I move that we approve the appropriation ordinance number 2545-2021A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Mayor, I'd recommend we skip over 10B. It appears to be still a little bit early. Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution pursuant to Kansas Fights Addiction Act, KSA 75-775, to support the capture and use of settlement funds received from opioid litigation. If approved, it would be resolution number...
2896-2021.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Matt. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. Before you today is a resolution, this is a requirement pursuant to a memorandum of understanding with the Kansas Attorney General's Office. This is a way to handle the distribution of settlement funds from the national opioid settlements. There are several of those. And so the MOU handles how that's distributed pursuant to a new state law, and it would cover all past and future settlements. The way it's broken down is any of the settlement money received by the state of Kansas gets put into a special Kansas Fights Addiction Fund. 75% of that is allocated to the state. 25% of that is allocated to be shared by cities and counties, 50/50. And there is a procedure to go about being eligible for that, and passing this resolution is one of those things. The resolution states that the city, or certifies that the city has in excess of $500 of expenses associated with fighting the opioid crisis. This is past expenses and expected future expenses. And interim finance director Jared Coleman has assisted by providing some of this information. The city has well over $500 of expenses just from the last, in the last year. The 10 most recent overdose and drug-related calls amounted to approximately $2,200 worth of salaries and benefits expense to the Garden City Police Department. Additionally, the supply expense related to nitrile gloves that are needed to handle fentanyl, and then also some testing kits for other opioids amounted to approximately $3,100 for the year. So the city has clearly met that mark. Another thing that the city has to represent in the resolution is that any of the funds that are received by the city are going to be spent for an approved purpose. So if current numbers, you know, this is a fluid number. It depends on how many municipalities participate, how many are eligible. But if everything stays the same, the Kansas League of Municipalities estimates that the city would receive approximately $2,300, sorry, $239,000 to be used for approved purposes. The, there is a little bit of a deadline involving this resolution. This has to be passed by January 1st, 2022. So with that in mind, I'm happy to answer any of your questions and encourage you to approve the resolution.
So my only question, Jimmy, was the resolution, was the MOU something that you created? Or was it something that they structured for us? And then you had, you just basically were adopting that resolution? I wasn't really sure. I mean, the leagues, the MOU, the one...
The league put this together.
Okay.
That's correct, yes. The MOU is drafted by the Kansas Attorney General's Office, the League of Kansas Municipalities, and the Kansas Association of Counties. So we didn't have any input on that.
Okay.
It's pretty standard. We've, I've reviewed it.
Right.
There's no, there are no issues with that.
Entertain a motion on this item for resolution 2896-2021.
I move to approve resolution 2896-2021.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy. Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 2897-2021, and it would remove nuisance at 1119 North 11th Street. Alicia?
Mayor and Commissioners, good afternoon. The governing body of the City of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain nuisance conditions on their property within the City of Garden City. It was determined that the residence at 1119 North 11th Street has environmental nuisance conditions on the property and is in violation of the city's environmental code. This is one inoperable vehicle on the property. Staff visited the property on many occasions and has been unable to reach the residents and/or owners. The property owner and the residents have been notified by two letters sent on August 18th, 2021, and November 23rd, 2021, according to Section 38-137 of the Environmental Code. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached ordinance or two, the governing body may not approve the attached ordinance. Staff would recommend approval.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the attached resolution.
There's been a motion to approve resolution 2897-2021. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. It is 1:29, so probably can't get into the next item because we do have a 1:30 at this time, so... So, we'll go back up to item B. And if Matt reads really slowly, we could probably get to that one thirty.
All right. This is, this is the public hearing for the consideration to adopt the development plan and establish a rural housing incentive district for Sunset Terrace Estates, Phase One A, by ordinance, and it's brought before the governing body. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-nine twenty-one? All right. And I think we have Alicia presenting on this item.
And I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Mayor and Commissioners, as required by the RHID statute, the Sunset, Sunset Terrace Estates, Phase One RHID development comes before the governing body to adopt the attached development plan and establish the RHID. This action is the last step of the, the development needs to take before the governing body in the RHID process. Sunset Terrace Estates, Phase One A, is generally located south of Sunset Memorial Gardens and on the west side of South Towns Road. This development will consist of seventy lots for single-family homes. According to our latest Community Housing Assessment Team study, to meet our housing needs, we need to build 120 housing units per year over the next eight years. Based on the current RHID feasibility analysis, from the existing RHIDs, we predicted an estimated 136 homes to be built in 2021. By the end of 2020, we issued forty certificate of occupancies and have issued thirty-nine certificate of occupancies in 2021. In 2020, we met our housing needs by 33%. Therefore, according to our chat study and the rate of housing development, Garden City shows a need for the housings to be built within this development. If the ordinance is adopted, the county USD 457 and Garden City Community College, as taxing entities, have thirty days in which to evaluate the proposed RHID. Shall a taxing entity determine it has an adverse effect on their jurisdiction, then the taxing entity will need to adopt a resolution stating such. And no such resolutions are passed and the ordinance shall be in effect. If within that timeframe, any of the taxing entities pass such resolution, then the city will need to take action to repeal the ordinance as required by statute. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached ordinance or two, the governing body may not approve the attached ordinance. Staff would recommend alternative one. For the fiscal note, the developer will be using private financing to fund the eligible costs of the RHID. The city will reimburse property tax increments to the developer over the life of the RHID project, which could be up to 21 years. The amount of the property tax distributions cannot exceed the $3,819,508.99 over the life of the RHID.
Any questions from the commission?
I have just a few comments, please, if I could. I mean, I know this is, this has been talked about before. And I know this is just the last step to get to the development phase on this agreement. I just, I've been notified and called about some concerns with the actual layout. And I, I do understand that we've talked about this before with the traffic study and things. And it's been kind of commented and directed that it would, it would happen in the second phase. But the concern is that if you double the size of, of a development here, which is just north of Towns Riverview, the traffic up there from the residents who have to travel that area is concerned about what that does with their congestion on getting out in the mornings. And I know we don't live up there. I, I definitely, I don't live up there, so I don't know what those traffic counts are. But the concern is with just one exit out onto the Towns Road, Towns Riverview Road. They would like to see a possible second exit onto that road. I know it was kind of discussed and directed, I guess that it would be in the future in phase two. So, I don't know. For me, I guess I don't know the process. I didn't have the answers in explaining to them, does this go back to the commission on whether or not they can review it for if they do exit on a different road? I couldn't answer that. So, right now, I just see the one exit that, you know, exits out on Town Road. So, I don't know if, if there really is a future road or what those concerns would be or if it could just be negotiated later, later on after this is approved to get a second road into Towns Riverview Road.
So, there is, they are putting just one entrance off of Towns Road. There is an existing one. There's one or two lots at the very south of it that they can exit onto Towns Road that would require them to go through.
And that's the one they're, and that's the one they're concerned about it being congested already. So, doubling the size of that area.
Right. So, at this time, they don't propose that they have an additional entrance off of Towns Road. If they were to change that, we'd have to go and start the process all over for their RHID as they would have to change the, the layout of their entire development.
Is it available in phase two, though? Or is that something that's been discussed?
It is in phase two. The, the second road is in phase two. But I had someone with the same concern, so.
Alicia, does this action approve the site plan for phase one?
This action does not approve the site plan for phase one. On the consent agenda, there is the actionable plat for Phase One A that you would be considering today.
So, the question of voting, I guess if the commission is up here determining whether or not that's something they want to take into account for voting yes or no. This item is about whether or not the project is eligible, eligible for a tax increment financing mechanism. And the site plan, which would be the design of the item, is under consent agenda. And it is item, well, it's G four. This item doesn't have any letters on it.
G four?
Yeah, G four. And if, you know, if the commission would want to predicate their vote on whether or not to finance a housing development project on the site plan, then I think that's something that the group can determine whether or not they want to put a pause on this agenda item, pull that item from the consent agenda, talk about that consent agenda item, vote on it. So, you know what you have or haven't approved from a layout standpoint and then talk about the financing. Right now, you're mixing policy issues, talking about, in my estimation, talking about a road on a financing item. But I also get it that if you're like, well, kind of my issue with the development in general has to do with the site plan, then maybe the commission would like to talk about that first, which is fine. And we, you just pull it from the consent agenda item and.
That's fine. We are still in a public hearing, though, on this. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this item? Okay. I will close the public hearing at this time. We can vote on this because it is just the, the financing part of it. So, entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-nine twenty-one dash twenty twenty-one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh. Commissioner Euler made the second. Any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Well, it's fresh reminder, it sounds like there's an interest in pulling that item off, so. This would be actually consent agenda item G four. We're gonna remove that and take that up now. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the final plat for Sunset Terrace Estates, Phase One A. Alicia?
Mayor and Commissioners, Cornerstone Professional Services, the applicant on behalf of Sunset Terrace Estates LLC, the developer requests approval of the final plat for Sunset Terrace Estates, Phase One A. Sunset Terrace Estates, Phase One A, is located south of Sunset Memorial Gardens on the west side of South Towns Road. The area for development was annexed into the city limits on November 6th, 2019. The request is to plat 37.4 acres plus or minus for proposed residential development to include seventy lots for single-family homes. This development will be using the RHID. The revised seconds middle of the final plat was presented for review on December 14th, 2021. Engineering and the electric department have requested a couple additional easements. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the final plat contingent to the requirements from the subdivision regulations are met or two, the governing body may not approve the final plat contingent to the requirements that the subdivision regulations are met. Staff would recommend alternative one, and there is no fiscal note for this.
So, the motion would be to, right, recommended. But if we wanted to look at it at a later date, to be postponed or, or just to not approve it?
Well, I was reviewing that, the minutes from this, they talked about it, but it's not showing on this plat, so.
Yeah, and, and that was the other thing. From the plat and from the layout of the site plan submitted, I couldn't really see everything.
So, your issue is that people that are living in the development south of this would see more problems because of traffic turning in and out of their development. But all the traffic would be contained north of it, so by the time that they're turning in or out of their development, that traffic would already be filtered out into this development, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but that's beside, I mean, that's KDOT's issue about that point.
And is there, is, does the other development, Lost Rivers, do they only have one point of exit?
Lost River, I'm.
Onto this road? The one that, that's positively concerned?
South?
Yeah.
For Towns Riverview?
Yeah.
They have two or three.
Right.
I know there's two. I don't know if there's three or not. I know there's two.
And their concern is also getting on Highway 50. That, that's also another concern.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And that's a KDOT, I know, I get that, but that's just their, you know, and concern that was brought up as well.
Yeah, I mean, just the amount of houses here, it's just that this phase one is doubling the size of what they are now. And they're congest, I, like I said, I don't live up there. I don't know what it is as far as in the morning getting out of there. But, and then in phase two, you've got almost that same amount of houses. So, then that triples. I think maybe it can be just simplified and satisfied by adding, there's a road on the second phase that goes through the center of that next phase. And just if you took that straight on out to Towns Road, it might suffice. I mean, I haven't really, and that's my thinking. I hadn't got that, but let me, let's, let's try and get this corrected before it's too late. Let's do it right.
What did the planning commission recommend on this?
They recommended approval.
At what sort of?
It was five.
It was five zeros.
Yeah, they talked about, yeah, they talked about it, that it's not listed on the plat, but I mean, it is planned, but.
And I'm coming, this is directions of citizens who've come and contacted me. It's issues that they, they see now and they don't want to face those issues in the future. If there is a road in the future, it, it could possibly be planned now instead of, in phase, in phase one instead of phase two, I don't know what the options are. I couldn't answer their questions that were.
Right. We, we've had contact with several people in Towns and actually, there, there isn't another street that will go into Towns from this development at all. This development goes all the way up to the property line. So, if you were wanting an, an additional entrance, staff would probably suggest extending that road. They would lose probably lots 11 and 10.
Does this design and its access to the arterial roadway, I guess it's more of a county arterial roadway, does it meet the subdivision regulations?
It does.
Have Lost Rivers added to this agenda?
It's under the consent agenda.
So, where is the dedicated, so it indicates, the chairman says, why is that plat you dedicated? And then Cornerstone, Kim Park's, Cornerstone says it'll be dedicated on phase two. So, where is that dedicated? But there's not another dedicated one going out to, to Towns. Is that what you're seeing?
Right. Yeah, there wouldn't be an additional entrance going off of, for them to get to Towns. Not in the, when they went to the planning commission, their preliminary and final plat was a little bit different, so they did make some changes to it. Since it was less than 10%, it didn't have to go back to the planning commission. Staff reviewed it internally.
So, for the entire phase one and phase two, there would just be that one exit out onto Towns Road?
Correct.
So, they were, I, to me, that's misleading on them because they were, I guess they expressed to me that they were told that in phase two, there would be another exit. I don't know. I haven't seen the phase two design.
Right.
But we're approving phase one on this, on this item here.
Yes, with fault, yeah.
Right.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that the governing body approve the final plat contingent to the requirements from the subdivision regulations are met. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
That item passed, three, two. Okay. Going back to item ten E. That's all right.
Do you want me to wait till he gets there or go ahead?
No.
Okay.
Just wait till he gets there. Okay.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty-eight ninety-eight dash twenty twenty-one.
Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain a nuisance condition on private property within the city of Garden City. It is determined that the residence located at 2104 North Third Street has environmental nuisance conditions on the property and is in violation of the city's environmental codes. There are several vehicles on the property that would need to be removed. Staff notified the property owner and has been unable to reach the property owner or the owner of the vehicles on, they sent two letters, one on October 7th, 2021, and one November 23rd, 2021. According to section thirty-eight dash one thirty-seven of the environmental code of ordinances, they have neither abated the nuisance conditions nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution would allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on the property. Alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution or two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend approval of the resolution. For the fiscal note, the abatement costs incurred by the city will be charged against the lots or parcels of ground on which the motor vehicle nuisance is located.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-eight ninety-eight dash twenty twenty-one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item eleven A, the governing body is asked to consider whether it would like to hear a proposal in February 2022 from KDOT for a state-funded roundabout as an alternative design to signalization.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
Wrong item.
I'm not talking about this one.
The city of Garden City recently received notification that the K-156 Jenny Barker Road, Mary Street intersection met traffic warrants for signalization. Designs for the signal have been submitted to KDOT for review and approval. During the public comments section of the November 16th, 2021 regular meeting, the city commission, Kansas Department of Transportation Deputy Secretary, Chief Engineer and Chief Engineer offered to the city commission an alternative proposal for a highway roundabout that would be designed and construct, designed and constructed at KDOT's expense. The attached fact sheet was included for the governing body's review and consideration. Following the meeting, staff and Mr. Mori identified that it would be possible to more formally frame a question for the commission, including a more detailed design proposal, cost estimates, and timeline for the roundabout to place alongside the same information for a traffic signal and to do so at a February 2020, at a February 2022 regular meeting. The purpose of this agenda item is not to decide whether or not the governing body would like to accept KDOT's proposal for a roundabout, but rather to determine if there is interest in considering a proposal in February. If there is not interest in hearing such a proposal, then the city and KDOT would proceed with the traffic signal design review, bid, and installation process as currently planned. If there is interest. If there is interest, KDOT will still proceed with its review of the signal design, but would also begin work on more, on a more detailed concept design, cost estimate and timeline for a roundabout. The governing body initially considered this item at the December seventh, twenty-two-one regular meeting. Following a two-two vote to agree to formally hear and consider a roundabout proposal from KDOT in February, the commission then voted three to one to table the item until today. In subsequent conversations with Bert Maury at KDOT, it would still be able to present this item at the February first, twenty-two, twenty-two meeting, if the commission wishes to move forward. Since the December seventh, twenty-two-one meeting, staff has received some correspondence, and I think it actually just ended up being one piece of correspondence, from the public on this item that was asked to be shared with you at this meeting, so that was included as well. So, your options are to agree to formally hear a consideration for a roundabout in February twenty-two alongside similar information about a signal, or to reject the offer to hear and consider a roundabout proposal from KDOT and move forward with the signalization project.
I did, I did go ahead and, um, submit some emails that I received, and if you guys would like to see those, I can pass those around. If not, that's fine too, but we've received, I've received many, many emails and then videos and links about how safe a roundabout is. And I agree, there's, there's some issue, you know, people that don't like the roundabouts, or it's, whatever it may be. I think it's kind of important here to look at what our future of Garden City is and, and how it's going to relate with different possibilities of different intersections and new developments and whatnot, but with this one being on the east side of town, it's a great intersection, it's a great piece of land that could allow us to have a safe roundabout, to train and have our students go about, so that when they, you know, it's, it's, you can, you can maneuver around the roundabout very easy. I've done them in places that I've gone, but just, you know, your kids that are just barely driving, and if they go off to school, there's places that, in school that they have roundabouts everywhere, so getting those drivers used to something and being able to drive around an area that they can feel comfortable with, and this roundabout would be big enough for trucks and, and smaller vehicles or whatever, but even large-sized trucks. And there's links that I've seen that have been passed, passed on to me have been, I mean, awesome, I thought, wow. That was kind of my concern at the beginning, when, um, KDOT first came and represented, presented this. I asked, that was one of my questions, was how are trucks gonna maneuver around this roundabout? And he says, there's, there's no problem at all. So, you know, after seeing it live on video, that's, that's a reassuring thing that I, you know, I saw for myself, and, um, from then on, I've just been receiving lots and lots of emails that we should put it in, it's, it's the, you know, it's, it's, it's a new thing, and we're gonna get used to it. Um, there was one gentleman that emailed me about, uh, an intersection in Joplin where he grew up. It was first a signal, um, and it was a two-highway intersection, and they ended up, after he go, he was going back, I mean, they, they redesigned it for a roundabout, and he says it's, it was hard to get used to at first, but it, it took maybe two, two times, and it was easy from now. It's, it's just the fact, I don't want to do it wrong, I guess, from, from my perspective, so I would vote for a roundabout.
I haven't had, um, well, I haven't had as many people come to me talking about wanting a roundabout in that particular location, and I don't know that people have an actual aversion to having roundabouts in Garden City, it's just not at that particular intersection. Um, and most of, I won't say all, but the majority of people who have approached me either in conversations or through email or phone calls have been for a traffic signal and not for the roundabout, just in that particular location, um, because that's kind of what they've come to, um, believe that was going to be put in that intersection, and I think that that's kind of where they are falling. But again, and, and it hasn't just been people who live in Garden City, it's been people who travel on one fifty-six coming into town on a pretty regular basis. Their biggest concern is just that location, and so I, my vote hasn't changed, or won't change.
So I was just gonna say, I've had people, you know, um, talking about the roundabout as far as an opportunity, this is an opportunity to try something, and also at the, not at our expense, I don't think people realize that a lot of, you know, highways and road constructions are extremely expensive. I mean, as a city, um, you know, there are costs, um, that we bear as, as a, as a cost, and I don't know if the five hundred thousand or half a million dollars is something that was ten years ago, because I know we've been trying to get a signalization out there, so I don't know if those are updated figures, but I'm gonna tell you, road costs and construction, I mean, all of that thing has skyrocketed, so I don't know if that five hundred thousand dollar signal, is that still accurate, or is it going to be a lot more expensive? So part of it is, is the cost, I know that there's a city, we want to make sure we judicially, judiciously use the dollars that are given to us, and again, having something that's provided, again, I don't, the aversion as far as whether roundabout or not roundabout, a lot of mine was, is this idea, I would like to see us try something that's, um, not at our expense, but I do think that the intersection is large enough, and I've seen roll over roundabouts where, if a truck needs to, they can roll over at the top of this. It's not like it's a mountain or, or, or a molehill, but I think here, I think this idea of the cost, and I don't know if, um, that, if there's that, if that estimate of a half a million dollars was many years ago, or if it's something that's pretty, as if it's pretty current of what, what their signalization.
Yeah, Mike, I don't know if you're prepared to answer that in detail, but if I can just throw a, I, I would say it would be fair to expect that our estimates are a little low. I mean, they've been updated not by, like, a detailed engineering design, but taking a number that maybe once upon a time was three fifty or four hundred and saying, well, that's gotta be about five hundred now. Well, we probably did that five years ago, so, yeah, I think it's fair to say that it might cost more.
Right, I just want to make sure that we're considering the overall cost, you know, of something that, I mean, and again, I think, you know, uh, half a million or even three-quarters of a million dollars, that's a lot of dollars, amount of the city coffers, and that is our expense. I mean, and then the thing about KDOT, the thing that made this more attractive for me, I'm not gonna fight about a signal or roundabout, but I think it made it more attractive for me as a commissioner is, how do we preserve the dollars that we have for things that we really can see that we, that there aren't any type of reimbursements or any type of subsidies or any type of, um, grants for, so that's, that's one of my main things. I didn't even think about the, you know, youth learn how to drive roundabouts, they are in other parts of the state. I think they call them peanuts and haze, but they are in other parts of the state, so I mean, it is something that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna encounter. So I'd love to see us do something, try it here, at not, not at our expense.
We're going around the horn?
Yeah, I guess we're going around the horn.
Well, I'm, I'm like, um, other people have said, and I said before, I'm a big supporter of roundabouts. I do think that they do a lot of things that they say. I just feel like Commissioner Euler that this is exactly the wrong place to do it, and exactly the wrong size and all that stuff. Um, some of the other things that I've since have been thinking about it is, um, if we go from, uh, in a singleized intersection to a, to a roundabout, we're losing four highly valuable corners, um, so if we're talking about things that we can get, if we build on those corners, those are desirable corners for commercial and development, um, that's potential tax base that we lose. Um, I'm not sure how infrastructure would run. We know how infrastructure runs at intersections, but if we have a roundabout, how are we gonna be running infrastructure around there? That might also increase, um, the cost there. And then, like I said, I've seen examples of, uh, an interchange like this working. They're almost always in rural highway intersection crossing. This very conceivably will be in the heart of Garden City within five years, ten years. And, and small intersections work in cities, big inner, big roundabouts work in rural settings. This is a big inner, a big roundabout that's trying to fit into, into a, a city setting, and it just doesn't seem like it's the best fit for that location.
It was a ballot question back in November of twenty-seventeen. I feel that we need to fulfill the ballot question that was presented and voted on by the citizens. The ballot question states, shall Fannie County, Kansas levy a retailer's sales tax in the amount of point-three-zero percent to take effect April first, twenty-eighteen, to be levied on retail sales commensurate within this county for a period of fifteen years with revenues of such tax used by the county and the City of Garden City, Kansas, as agreed to an interlocal cooperative agreement between the city and county, which shall provide that revenues from levy of the tax allocated to the county and city shall be used for finance of construction and improvements of Jenny Barker Road in the county to urban design standards, including signalization of the intersection of Jenny Barker Road and K-156 Highway, construction and operation maintenance, and equipping of a third fire station, and it goes on. In that ballot issue, we need to fulfill that promise of what we provide, ask the taxpayers to vote on, and that is the signalization of Jenny Barker and one fifty-six. And that's how I stand. My motion would be to reject the offer to hear the consideration about the roundabout proposal from KDOT and move forward with the signalization of the project. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
That passed, three to two. All right, moving on to.
Professor Ortiz, just a second.
Oh, sure, not a problem, yeah. He kind of jumped the gun last time, but.
I, uh, yeah, I think we're ready, twelve A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve agreement with the architect to complete a site survey for the combined Public Works Department for sixteen thousand four hundred dollars.
Yep, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. A little bit of background on this, back on October nineteenth of twenty-twenty-one, the governing body accepted the Public Works Needs Assessment Study Report as it was done in its full, it was completed. Uh, the governing body directed staff to take the next step in completing a site survey of the property for the proposed Public Works combined facility. Uh, if approved, the architect will require the survey firm, which is Schwab Eaton from Manhattan, Kansas, to complete, uh, the work within sixty days of issuing their contract and provide hard copies and electronic PDF files of the survey to, which will come to us as well, and to the engineering group to review. Uh, the architect and the city will review the information that's provided in the survey to chart the very next steps of evaluating where this campus would go should that be constructed. It would include the discussion of the streets, ingress and egress in and out of the area, how it would integrate with the public utilities service center there, um, parks and recreation, tally trail extensions to connect to it, occasions, options for where the water, wastewater or the water retention areas would be, and then, of course, just the general utility infrastructure layout. Uh, if approved today, then staff would come back to the governing body at a later meeting with the outcomes of the survey and kind of how we thought it should be laid out. Uh, your alternatives would be approve the agreement with the architect for sixteen thousand four hundred dollars, or do not approve the agreement. Uh, staff recommends alternative one is to approve the agreement with the architect for sixteen thousand four hundred dollars, and the funding from this will come from the, the GL code listed in Solid Waste Public Works Facilities Engineering, which has a balance of a hundred thousand dollars in it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve the agreement with the architect for sixteen thousand four hundred dollars.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item?
I do want to say, I appreciate the, uh, when we had a pre-meeting presentation and the layout that they presented, the, the detail and also the thoughtfulness that went into that presentation. I've referred back to it many times, so.
Yep, yep. Any other discussion, none being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, the governing body is asked to accept a bid from Axon Enterprise, the makers of the Garden City Police Department's conducted electrical weapon, commonly referred to as Taser. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you is a bid from Axon Enterprises for our Tasers. I'm not gonna read CEW a million times today, nor am I gonna read you, to you what the upgraded technology that Axon has. So, uh, what I did do is I brought one of our senior instructors, Taser instructors, uh, to answer any questions you might have about the technology, but I would like to talk to you a little bit about why we're, uh, in this position. We are currently at the end of a five-year contract with Axon, and they've upgraded their technology to a new Taser, uh, called the Taser seven. They don't, or no longer are supporting the X-26P, which is what we have. So, um, we're at the twilight of our, uh, contract now, and we're getting ready to go into a new one, and with that, we have upgraded technology, both with the, um, Taser seven, and then we also have upgraded, uh, device management at the back office and some of the stuff that we use for the tracking of any deployments and the training that we have with that. The contract that we're, uh, in the bid is that we would get the same number of Tasers that we are utilizing right now, but we would also get, uh, holsters, yearly training cartridges and a five-year warranty on all the new Tasers. Um, this is being presented as new business and not under the consent agenda, which usually is where it would be. Uh, first, because it's a sole source, uh, with Axon being the only producers of this, and second, because, uh, there's a little bit of a shortfall in our funding, because we have allotted approximately, um, twelve thousand and some change towards the contract for replacement Tasers and cartridges, and this new contract, uh, is gonna be, uh, roughly eighteen thousand dollars yearly and totaling a ninety thousand dollar contract for five years. So alternatives are accept the new bid from Axon, and order number two, reject the contract and provide with further direction. Uh, we obviously recommend alternative number one. Kind of talked a little bit about the fiscal note, uh, we're gonna make up the shortfall in savings and other line items in our next year's budget. But I would be more than happy to answer any questions and any that I can, I'll bring Sergeant Bee Hill up here who can.
So Chief, will the, the other Tasers, will they be phased out since they're not supported, or will, will they take those in, in trade? Or do, will they have any value at all? I was just curious about that.
Uh, great question, so yes, they will be phased out, they will, they will have some value in trade-in. Uh, we talked a little bit about maybe keeping both versions. The problem with that is then we'd have to support it with cartridges and holsters, and it's just not really conducive. So, uh, when we phase it out, as we phase it out, uh, if we do keep any of it, it might be for the ACOs, the Animal Control Officers, who carry a Taser, and they have one assigned to them. Otherwise, they're checked out daily by officers. I appreciate that.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to accept the new five-year contract at ninety thousand dollars totaling eighteen thousand dollars yearly.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None, none being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you.
Item twelve C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve year-end transfers from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Reserve for selected twenty-two-one programs, capital projects and equipment purchases not completed by year's end.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here today to present, um, a planned transfer of funds, particularly from our General Fund, um, some of our budgets from the General Fund. Um, as you know, budgets are prepared eighteen months prior to the completion of those budgets, um, and sometimes the projects or the expenses that we plan just don't happen, especially with COVID and some of the time we've seen as far as extended lead times. Um, we have a number of projects that have been identified that were not able to be expensed out of twenty-two-one, so rather than have that carryover to a cash carryover of the General Fund for twenty-two, um, we have identified these items and hope to transfer them to the Capital Improvement Reserve in a specific GL so that those departments can finish out that project and pay for it with the money that was set aside in this calendar year. I will say, one exception, the, the exception to this, um, concept is, is what we're asking for in the second paragraph here. The Police Department has identified, um, a lack of some budget for equipment, furniture in relation to the shooting range project, the municipal court building and evidence building, um, and the law enforcement center remodel that are all upcoming or being completed right now. And so the funds that are being asked to be transferred for, for those projects were not necessarily allocated for that specific purpose in the twenty-two-one budget, but we've identified a few budget lines that have been under-expensed in the year, and we're asking to transfer that money or those funds to account for these future purchases for that equipment or that furniture. There's a, the items attached have the complete breakout, and then there's also a memo from the Police Department. I would highlight that some of those, uh, values in the Police Department memo have decreased due to them expensing out some additional items within this calendar year, so they reflect the budget balances remaining. so they reflect the budget balances remaining that are accessible for that purpose going into this transfer. Any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve the transfer of funds from the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the 2024 C-clip agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation.
Yep, good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, a little bit of background, back on February 2nd of this year, uh, you authorized the application of, uh, 2KDOT for the geometric improvements to Kansas Avenue or K156, between Third Street and Belmont, roughly, on Kansas Avenue, the last section that hasn't been widened out. Uh, staff applied in February of '21 and subsequently was approved by KDOT, uh, with the funding mechanism as their normal amount, 85% KDOT, 15% the city, with the maximum paid out from KDOT at a million dollars. Uh, with updated costs, adjusted the bid based upon the 2020 original bid items and inflation up to 2024, it's now estimated that project will cost $1,605,000. Uh, if you approve this, uh, it requires the mayor's signature, and then it'll be sent off to KDOT for its, uh, signatures and then returned back. Staff recommends the, well, you have two alternatives, authorize the mayor to sign the contract, uh, with KDOT for the 2024 C-clip, or do not authorize the mayor to sign that contract. We recommend alternative number one, and then the city's financial obligation in this agreement is estimated to be $605,000, uh, with KDOT paying their million, uh, and this would be funded with a general obligation bond that will be issued sometime in fiscal year 2022. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So is, is there a time that you have to use these funds by, or no, or?
Uh, they'll have to be used, well, it depends, uh, sometimes the bonds are written where you have like 36 months to, to use the funds, and, and I believe those can be extended if conditions are right to extend it, so... I think we'll have plenty of time to spend it.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to authorize the, uh, the mayor to sign KDOT, uh, 2024 C-clip contract?
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Second Amendment to Schulman Crossing Phase II Development Agreement. At its November 5th, 2019, regular meeting, the governing body considered and approved the First Amendment to the Schulman Crossing Phase II Development Agreement, which established a performance incentive for the development of the remaining pad lots. The performance incentive would pay $100,000 per developed out parcel pad, five of which remained as described in the amendment, upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the building, provided the building permit be issued prior to December 31st, 2021. The COVID-19 pandemic disrupted the national retail real estate market, and the developer has requested the timeline of the incentive be extended by one additional year. Staff agrees with the assessment of the impact of the pandemic and supports the extension of the incentive as reflected in the Second Amendment to Schulman Crossing Phase II Development Agreement. The financial benefit to the city by improving the performance of the TIF through developing the district faster outweighs the upfront cost of the incentive. Your alternatives are to approve the Second Amendment or to not approve the Second Amendment. Staff recommends approval, and the funds, uh, for this, uh, were initially described in the November 5th, 2019 agenda item, still apply. Um, there is 2020 general fund dollars in, in what's the 171 department, I think it's called Community Development, but it has a, it's an eclectic mix of different things. Uh, but we do have, uh, $100,000 budgeted in that line item, um, for, uh, this type of, this type of activity, and while not specifically for this activity, that's what's been, uh, in there before and either transferred into the O5 fund in previous years, uh, but certainly the 2020 distribution and the 20, I'm sorry, 2021 and 2022 distributions could, uh, could be made towards this. Um, I do believe of the five remaining pad lots, one of those was developed and we did expend the $100,000 incentive in late April of this year, and that would be the end cap, northern end cap, uh, to the inline stores of Phase II. The one that has the old maybe in it.
So, is it 400,000, is that correct? That's what I'm not understanding, left, or did we cap it at $500,000?
Well, there were five pad lots as the agreement defined it. Now, they may end up splitting those or cutting the dice, those are a, a bunch of different ways. What we said is for these tracts, uh, there's $100,000 of incentive money available, provided you pull your permit by a certain date, and then the permit, it has inherently a timeline that you've got to complete it, the incentive wouldn't get paid until the certificate of occupancy was issued. What we're doing here is giving them one more year for that. You have to pull the permit by date, which would change in this amendment from December 31st, 2021 to December 31st, 2022.
Entertain a motion on this item, then?
I move to approve the Second Amendment to the Schulman Crossing Phase II Development Agreement.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Item 12F. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a community improvement district development agreement between Garden City Plaza LLC and the City of Garden City. In 2019, the city approved the creation of a community improvement district for the property owned by Garden City Plaza LLC, which is the northwest-facing line of stores and corresponding property at Garden City Plaza Shopping Center. Since that time, Garden City Plaza LLC has been considering a number of development options and is now ready to move forward. City Bond Council, Mary Carson, has assisted in the preparation of the attached development agreement that has been reviewed and approved by the developer. Your alternatives are to approve the agreement or not approve the agreement, we recommend approval. And a community improvement district is, just a refresher, establishes a sales tax incentive whereby the properties in the development levy an additional sales tax increment on the retail sales within the district. Therefore, there is no cost to the city.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve a guarantee Plaza LLC, LLC CID development agreement.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
If we're ready for the consent agenda, it would be, we've already taken up item four, so it would be items one through three and items five through eight, and if the governing body approved that, the minutes would need to reflect that, uh, Commissioner Unruh abstained from...
Item three.
Item three.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, with my abstention on item three.
There's been a motion to approve items one through three, five through eight with Commissioner Unruh abstaining from item three on the consent agenda, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. All right. On to Commissioner.
Yeah, I think we're ready for Commissioner reports, just for those in the audience or anybody that may be watching live and wants to hop in their vehicle, we will be having a reception for, uh, City Attorney Chris L and Deputy City Manager Cunningham, uh, thanking them for their service immediately following this meeting. So, join us across the hall, we'll stay there for, uh, for a while, uh, they will stay there for a while, I can, and greet folks, but, uh, you know, we're probably on a, we're probably on a trajectory to start that shortly after 2:30, uh, and we'll, folks will probably be around till 3:30 or 4:00.
Sounds good. Commissioner Unruh, you up first for?
I cannot believe, this is the, this is an awesome day to be first, so, um, also I don't want to eat into any more of Randy's time, but anything to keep him here longer, so... I just want to just, first of all, congratulate, uh, Mayor Sessner on the 10 years, that's a pretty impressive accomplishment, and that's, it's wonderful, uh, knowing to see the dedication of people who served the city, all throughout the city. I, I really enjoyed last meeting, all the, seeing all of the long-term city awards, so your award being today was really nice.
Thank you.
Um, I also want to just congratulate Bob Kreitzer, was, uh, I don't know if you've watched the county commission, he was, um, seated as the newest county commissioner, so we're excited to be working with him, and also excited to see, um, again, I think that the county commission and we have a really great relationship with him, and that's going to continue, so I'm excited about, um, his opportunity to serve, I know he is also, and so, um, I'm looking forward to our first formal meeting when we get to meet together and do those things. Um, I do want to say, uh, well, Eric Garcia, that is, that was really neat, and really, um, it was very intimidating, all of the people, but what a neat, um, opportunity, and I hope it's something I know his mom will have to tell him, and the pictures will tell the story years, um, in the future, but, um, what a special guy, um, and I think also just the way that he was honored today really says that we as a community are really looking out, and it really takes, I mean, all ages, and, I mean, he saved a lot of, lot of, he saved a lot of property damage and hopefully, and maybe some people's lives. I do want to mention the Fennett Foundation and how much we appreciate, the Fennett Foundation has been an incredible partner with the city many, many times. You look at our local zoo, there's other, other, many other things that they've done in our community, but I just do want to say thank you to everyone over there, Keverly, um, Keverly Hart, who is the director, and just how much I appreciate her and Amy, uh, they do an excellent job and really, um, have the best interest in for our city. Finally, I want to, um, say thank you, um, to Jennifer first, and, uh, it's, I love to see her, her family here, um, you know, uh, they're going to be able to see a lot more of her, hopefully, and so it's a lot of, it's a lot of energy, and she probably needs that, um, but, um, it was a lot of fun seeing them here, and we just want to say thank you for all the work you've done. We know that it's not ending, but, because we as a community really pull together to do things, and so that's what's exciting. Um, yeah, I was excited to see, I mean, I'm sorry to see Randy retire, I mean, was excited for him, um, and I know that this is a really opportunity for him to do some neat things that he wants to do, um, and we even benefited as a city for so many years, um, really, anybody's shoes are hard to fill, I mean, and someone who's been here and protected and keep, and kept us on the straight and narrow, especially with Mayor Sessner for 10 years, I don't know how you did it, um, but, you know, kept us on the straight and narrow and also just really protected us as a city. I, I can imagine the number of resolutions and contracts and the things that you've reviewed for us that have really made the difference, so you're a big part of our history, and I know you'll be a big part of our future, but we just wanted to say thank you, so. And with that, I'm done.
All right. Commissioner Ortiz?
It's a great day when Commissioner Unruh goes first, because he says everything, and we don't have to say anything.
That's right.
No, just that, yeah, yeah, no, everything that Commissioner Unruh has said, also just thanks for everyone's, uh, involvement with the city and, and accomplishments, and so that thanks goes on, uh, probably for years to come, so, um, we'd also like to just, on top of that, adding what the, uh, I was joking with the, with a firefighter from Dodge City, and we got to talking about how, you know, he says Dodge City has better authentic Mexican food than Garden City, so...
Oh.
Um, and then we got to like talking about Wednesday when, you know, things kind of happened, and, you know, he was talking that Dodge City had roofs blow off over there, I said, well, that goes to say that we got better construction here in Garden City than Dodge City, so, but it was just, it was neat to just talk to other, you know, fellow neighboring cities, but I'm just joking, but, um, no, but thanks to the city for, um, just getting things back in, in service, for, uh, there were some, some emails that were spreading thanks and, and, uh, just for those guys who are out there and, and the strong winds and, you know, just giving all their all, giving, giving their duty for, for the citizens here in Garden City, so thanks to Mike and all the other departments who've gotten those, uh, police station and firefighters and just, you know, what an amazing, you know, group of people and, in our department, so, uh, just like to just extend that thanks from the city commission up here, so, um, also, no, I think that's it, so, uh, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Euler?
Yeah, I had a chance to visit with Chief Ursick today, and I asked him how his first week went, which was last week, and, um, it was, you know, literally trial by fire for him, but I just wanted to also thank, you know, not only him, but Chief Pruitt and Mike and, and everybody in the city who also just responded. I heard a lot of sirens going off, and, um, every single time I hear a siren, especially when it's in a, you know, inclement weather situation like that, I just say a quick little prayer, and you guys really, really did a great job getting everything back on and being out there, um, so thank you on behalf of all of us. Um, also, um, thanks to the Fennett Foundation, I know it's just a great relationship that we have with them, and they're so forward-thinking in helping us, and just that dedication that they've had for many, many years has just been fantastic. I also want to encourage people, if they haven't, uh, taken the survey on the comprehensive plan and the downtown, um, master plan survey, to do that, you can go onto the city's Facebook page, and you can take that survey. Um, it's really important that we have as much input from the community as possible, because you don't want just 1,500 people in a community our size to tell us, you know, make, you know, those decisions, so make sure that you certainly do get in there and do that.
Thank you, Randy, um, it's been a pleasure to sit next to you for the past couple of years, and so I, I will miss that. I look forward to sitting with Jennifer and having her up here, and Jennifer, thank you for everything that you've done as Deputy City Manager, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Commissioner Dick?
Well, I had a great time touring the municipal court in Evansville today.
Yes.
I don't think it's been mentioned yet.
Right.
We left that for you.
So, no, and it, it looks great, um, I, you, probably if you used to be an employee at the telegram, you probably wouldn't even recognize it when she walked in, so it looks great, and, and that's really testament to, to everybody who worked on it, but specifically to Jennifer, um, on getting that, and, and kind of a theme with her being in, the role that she's, um, leaving is to how well she did what she did, um, the water park being national or worldwide award-winning and stuff like that, so we're very appreciative and lucky to have had Jennifer, um, for the time that we had, and we'll definitely miss her in the city, but we will know, uh, and the city in whole will benefit still, so thank you for your time, Jennifer, and then, um, with Randy, um, all the work that you've done, not just for, like, like the, like the proclamation said, not just for the city of Garden City, but for the school districts and the community college and all that stuff, your impact, um, over these last three decades and plus, has been felt and appreciated by everybody in the community, even if they don't even know who you are, what you did, you definitely did, um, serve it well, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Also, um, like I said, Fire Department, Utility Department, great job during the windstorm, um, we, we really do have some great people, and they did a good job, timely job, um, like I had a Facebook post where between us losing power to people showing up was within five minutes, um, and I don't know if there's too many utility companies that can have that sort of response, and, and so thank you, and my daughters were very impressed. Last couple of things, um, thank you to everybody in the city who takes the time to put up Christmas lights. That's one of those things that you don't get to enjoy yourself, you're doing it for everybody else, so thank you, we drove around last night with the girls, um, looking at that, and, and we had some pretty good displays around town, so take a minute if you can and just drive around at night, it's pretty nice. And then last thing is please keep everybody safe, uh, while you're traveling for this holiday season, uh, remember this is a very busy time for everybody, um, so please keep safe, and then also remember there's been a lot of life, uh, losses of lives this year, so it might be hard, additionally hard for friends and family, please check in with them and make sure they are fine and include them when you can, and that's what I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, I just want to, um, recognize Randy for his day today in Garden City here, and thank him for his service, uh, to the community and helping, uh, not only the commission, but, um, like Commissioner Dick said, and it was in the proclamation, the other, uh, community agencies that you've, um, served council and helped, uh, with in our community, your service to our community has been invaluable. I want to also recognize Jennifer and thank her for her, uh, number of years of service to the city, um, even though you're transitioning, um, you'll still be kind of with us, you'll be moving up to sit with us, so, um, but also, um, December 30th is your day, so I want to just congratulate you. Um, yeah, Eric Garcia, it was great to see that somebody reacted that young of age and, you know, explained that, you know, this is why the Fire Department goes out and does these things, not just for kids that age, but for kids in general, and educating them on, you know, reporting things like that, um, if you see something... in general, and educating them on, you know, reporting things like that. If you see something, hear something, please say something, you know? And that's what we're, we're drilling into our kids. If you see something, please say something. And that's what he did. He saw something, and he reported it. And it did save, you know, not only the structure, but it could, like Commissioner Ortiz said, could have saved lives. So again, I think it was a great recognition for a young man doing an extraordinary thing. I'm, just want to say I'm very humbled and honored to be recognized for serving Garden City for the last 10 years. I'd like to just thank the community for the support that they have given me, you have given me, to serve on this commission and serve our community. I also noticed, as, because everybody else has stated everything else, so I always hate rehashing everything. And it, you always see, they try to, you know, rewrite it. I did notice out that there's, at a number of intersections in our community, we have counters going on. Is, are we looking at trying to update our, those intersection areas? If you could kind of just kind of let us know. I had somebody ask me, and I was like, I think they're just trying to get a traffic count to figure out, you know, the, what, what the numbers look like at the different intersections, but.
Yes, Mayor, we work with KDOT on an annual basis, and we come in and we assist them, and we target different streets in town, different intersections at different times to get traffic counts and try to keep them current, up to date to where we're at. So that's what's going on.
Okay.
Feel free to drive over them as many times as you'd like.
I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's also the street ceiling, too, that's going to be going on.
Sure. If you want to mention the street ceiling?
Yes, I can. The street ceiling, thank you, Commissioner. That's going on on the south side of town. They're down there working. I was just down there this morning. That's in preparation for later this next summer, when we come in and do our street sealing program, where we put down liquid asphalt and some aggregate to seal that up. So first is a crack ceiling to seal all those, and then we come in later and do that. So hopefully they'll be done in about a two-week period.
Sure. And again, I'd like to thank our Utilities Department, our Fire Department, all of our first responders from last week's major weather event that we had. There was no school that day, just the superintendent felt that, you know, we didn't need to have buses and students and parents out during that, that weather event, especially when they were talking, you know, the winds and, you know, how dark it became and everything. So but we have an outstanding utility department. We have awesome first responders that go above and beyond the call of duty, and they really do serve our community. Wrapping up, I just wanted to mention that, you know, Christmas is about family. That's how, actually, Christmas began. It was with family. It was the birth of a child. So just be, just remember family and get together and, and just remember what the real season, the reason for this season is about. And I just wish the community a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous and Happy New Year. And to that, I call the meeting adjourned.